Good evening, it's Monday, February 24th. We're ready for our city council meeting. Let's start with the legislative allegiance, please.
Let's make allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the roll call will show that all city council members are here this evening. We have a new employee to introduce. Wendy, let's have you talk about this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce the Carroll Public Library's newest full-time employee, Andy Heckroth. Andy started as our adult services librarian on Monday, February 10th. He will be taking care of the lending and borrowing of books to other libraries, helping to implement our library book clubs, and of course, getting to know our library patrons. We appreciate Andy's upbeat attitude and the enthusiasm he has already brought to this role. On behalf of the library's trustees, patrons, and staff, I want to welcome Andy to the Carroll Public Library and the City of Carroll, and I hope he enjoys his new position for many years to come. And I told him that this was gonna happen, and he did not have to give a speech, and he could just leave at the end of this.
No speech?
Up to you.
Up to you.
Boy, is yours.
I'm gonna sing a song.
You sing, dance, anything?
Glad to have you aboard.
Glad to have you aboard.
Thanks very much, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and we have a proclamation to read this evening regarding that issue. Whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling and New Opportunities has designated March 25th, March 2025, as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, and whereas problem gambling is a public health issue affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds, and whereas problem gambling has a significant societal and economic cost for individuals, families, businesses, and communities, and whereas problem gambling is treatable and treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals and society as a whole, and whereas numerous individuals, professionals, and organizations have dedicated their efforts to the education of the public about problem gambling and the availability and effectiveness of treatment, and whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling and New Opportunities invite all residents of Carroll, Iowa to participate in Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Therefore, I Gerald Lester do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in Carroll, Iowa, and encourage all citizens to support the National Council on Problem Gambling, Iowa Health and Human Services Office of Problem Gambling, Prevention, and Treatment Services, Your Life Iowa, and New Opportunities, and their efforts to mitigate gambling-related harm nationwide. So that's proclamation that I will be signing, and Dorinda Weedy is here, and she is with New Opportunities and would like to speak for minutes. Come on up and introduce yourself and talk away.
Okay, my name is Dorinda Weedy. My official title at New Opportunities is Problem Gambling Champion. Does not mean I'm really good at gambling, just means that I'm really good at talking to people about gambling. Part of having March as Problem Gambling Awareness Month, the goal is to get information out to the public just about some of the harms that are caused by gambling, and some of the statistics also. The main difference between just being a recreational gambler and a problem gambler is when the gambling activity starts to interfere with your life. Similar to substance use disorders, it can affect your family, obviously your finances, it can affect work, and it can even cause loss of important things like homes, finances. In extreme cases, there's some warning signs on this paper that I have, but I'm not gonna read them all, but in extreme cases, problem gambling can cause bankruptcy, legal problems, job loss, family harms, and thinking about suicide. And that's one of the biggest things that I like to get out to the public is that of all of the addictions that we have in our world, gambling, problem gambling disorder, has the highest rate of suicide and suicidal thoughts of all of them. And when you look at veterans, that's even higher, the veterans that have problem gambling. This is some, from some, sorry, statistics from the National Gambling Association. An estimated 2.5 million US adults, which is 1%, meet the criteria for a severe gambling problem. Another 5 to 8 million, or 2 to 3%, meet one or more of the criteria for a gambling disorder and are experiencing problems due to their gambling behavior. So it sounds like a really small percentage, but because of the high costs, especially that high suicide, it's still really important to get the information out and let people know that there is treatment available. The last thing I wanted to point out, the National Council on Problem Gambling estimates that the annual national social cost of problem gambling is $14 billion. So it not only costs those individuals, it costs society as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to see.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the fiscal year 2023-24 Annual Financial Statement Audit. Laura, do you have anything to say before we-
Nope.
About the audit or anything?
Jennifer Walkup.
So Jennifer Walkup is here. You did our audit for us this year again.
Again.
Thank you very much.
And we don't have anybody new, so we've went through this field before, so I'm gonna really abbreviate it. But Feldman and Company did audit the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate and remaining fund information of the City of Carroll as of the year ending June 30th, 2024. Through related financial notes to financial statements and comparative, collectively comprised the city's basic financial statements as listed in the table of contents. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above in all material respects and the respective cash balance financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the City of Carroll at June 30th, 2024, and the respective changes in the financial basis position for the year then, and it is in accordance with the basis of accounting as described in Note 1, which is the cash basis. We conducted our audit in accordance with accounting standards generally accepted in the United States of America. The standards are applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. Our responsibilities under those standards are further described in the Auditor's Responsibility for Financial Statements section of our report. We are required to be independent of the city and to meet our ethical responsibilities in accordance with the relevant ethical requirements relating to our audit. We believe that the audit evidence that we obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide the basis of our audit opinions. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with the cash basis of accounting, as described in Note 1, and for determining that the cash basis of accounting is acceptable basis in preparation of the financial statements in the circumstances. Management is also responsible for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal control relative to the preparation and for fair presentation of the financial statements that are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or from error. Our objective is to obtain a reasonable assurance about whether or not the financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error, to issue a report that concludes our opinions and to obtain reasonable assurance at the high level is not absolute assurance and is not a guarantee that the audit conducted with the gas and with governmental audit may not always detect material misstatement when it exists. Supplementary information and other information is included in our report, and the biggest thing that you, as the fiscal responsibility, as your fiduciary responsibility, please, please read the entire management discussion and analysis. This gives you a nutshell of what all my numbers are talking about, okay? Financial highlights were that the government funds receipts decreased 19.4% or approximately $4,690,000 from the previous year. The main reason is because there was less debt issued in '24. Disbursements for the governmental activities increased $2,898,000, or about 17% from the previous year, and that's because there were more capital expenditures during '24 than there were in '23. The total city cash basis net position decreased about 2.9, or approximately $890,000. That includes the $1,620,000 decrease on the government side and $172,000 increase on the business side. Government funds and business funds, business funds are all of your utility funds, the water, the sewer, et cetera. And on page 12, you'll see a side-by-side comparison, synopsis of where the receipts came in and where the property taxes came in and what kind of taxes came in. And you'll see the decrease in '24 compared to '25. You'll see the increase in disbursements from '24 to '25, which includes and shows you that we had a net change of a decrease of $126,000. On page 14 is the business-type activities, the water, the sewer, the stormwater, and you'll see that we had an increase in revenue and a decrease in disbursements. So we had a net change in position of $172,000. There were two budget amendments, and at the end of the year, the budget was not exceeded by what you spent. Aren't supposed to do that, and you didn't. At the year-end, there were $9,361,000 of bonds and other long-term debt compared to the $10,335 that was shown from last year, so we're doing a good job of paying down the debt as well. Remember that Exhibit A, which is on '20 and '21, that's the citywide financial statement. It's, it's what were the activities, where did we get our money, what was the net result? And as a city, we always start with the expenses. We have public safety, public works, health and social services, culture and recreation, community and economic development, general government, debt service, and capital projects. And then we have the water, sewer, and stormwater expenditures. We have charges for some services, that's shown on the next column. We have some operating grants or restricted interest, and then we have some capital contribution grants. And then we have a net outlay, disbursements over receipts. And you'll see that in the government side, yes, we are in a deficit. On the business side, there is a surplus. Where are we gonna get to make up that 15 million we're short? Well, it comes from property taxes, from debt service, from tax increment financing, from hotel motel tax, from local option sales tax, from franchise fees, from investment earnings, bond proceeds, miscellaneous funds, and sale of capital assets. When all that's added together, we show again the $161,000 deficit for the '24 year for the government, and an increase of $171,583 for the business side. And for year-to-date, we have $19,162,000 surplus in the general fund and a $10,964 surplus in the activities, so that the city has a $30,000, $30,127,000 surplus at the end of the year. Schedule B is the general fund, the government funds, general, road use, local option, debt service, capital projects, and all the other funds. You go to page 26 and 27, that is the proprietary funds, water, sewer, stormwater, and all the other smaller proprietary funds. We're gonna skip ahead of the notes because you've been through those several times. Schedules 1 and 2 are the non-major funds. Schedule 3 is a detail of what we started the year with debt, what we issued, what we redeemed, and what the balance at the year-end of that debt. Schedule 4 is the detail, how long is that debt gonna last? And you'll notice that the revenue bonds have one more year, and they're paid off. You have one more year in the GO '24, and it's been paid off. So we're in the right direction. Page 5 is probably a little more interesting because that's the capital projects. That's where we got our money and what we spent our money on each of the different capital projects that we had going during 2024. 74 and 75 are just year-by-year examples of receipts and disbursements for information only. And then we have our findings in question cost. There was an unmodified opinion issued on the financial statements, which were prepared on the financial, or basis of cash receipts and disbursements. That's a comprehensive basis accounting other than US generally accepted accounting. The audit did not disclose any non-compliance, which is material to the financial statements. There were no matters noted in internal control deficiencies, and there were no matters noted for non-compliance. We have other statutory reporting. We're supposed to make sure that the official depositaries were not exceeded, they were not. We wanted to make sure that the disbursements did not exceed anything that was budgeted, they did not. We wanted to make sure that there were no travel expenses for spouses of city officials or for employees that were noted, we did not find any. Business transactions did not appear to represent a conflict of interest because they were under $6,000, that's official. We have some excess balance in some of the accounts, and that's basically a timing issue. We have money that has not yet been spent but intended to be spent. We have bond coverage, we're supposed to make sure you are adequately covered, and you are. Minutes, we didn't find any transactions that should have been in the minutes that were not. We did not notice any non-compliance with investment properties and provisions of Chapter 12, B and C. We didn't see any non-compliance in the terms of the bond revenue provisions. Financial conditions we did observe in the airport project and the utility fund project, they're in the hole right now. And that's because we spent the money, and now we're waiting to get the money from the grants that we have coming in. And tax increment financing, we're supposed to make sure that we certified the loans and advances and indebtedness and bonds to the county auditor for reimbursement of the incremental tax submitted for fiscal '24. That was done, the report was done timely, and we didn't see any deficiencies. If you have any questions, you know where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's one of the first years we haven't had a minor ding or anything.
No, no minor ding.
Yeah. Usually it's somebody that shouldn't have voted, you know, conflict of interest.
Yep.
Yeah, I looked at that right away. I go to that page first. So would it take hours, days, weeks, months, or years to get this all done for us?
To get this done, well...
Hours?
Hours, hours.
Lots of them.
Lots of hours, yes.
You worked faster than me, this took me days.
Yeah, multiple days, multiple hours, yep. But you have a very good clerk who, when I ask her for the information, she's very well organized and she gives it to me well. So she helps cut down on the number of hours that I would have to spend if that wasn't available.
It's great to know. Any other questions?
Okay.
Jen, thanks for coming.
Have a good year. We'll see you in another three months.
Motion to accept the report.
Yes. Is there a motion? Jason, second.
Wait, it's first.
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes of the February 10th, 2025 meeting, approval of bills and claims, includes licenses and permits, one to include the renewal of Class C retail alcohol license for the Carroll Moose Lodge Number 273, and application for tax abatement under the Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan. Are there any questions? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right, we got Tom and Jason, second. Roll call vote, please.
Shrek? Yes. Bauer?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Born Arrow?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
All right, are there any oral requests this evening or communications from the audience? This would involve anything that is not on our agenda this evening? Anyone who'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Come on up.
Oh, you got the short straw, huh?
Just go ahead and give us your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes to present.
Okay, it won't take me that long.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Kathy Heinrichs, we live at 218 East 12th Street, and this is about the 12th Street project and eliminating parking on our side of it, like the south side of the street. We have three driveways, neighbors, ours, the neighbors, and we all use that street. Us probably more because we only have a single driveway. And then Hugh tracks across the street. He uses it when he has his lawn care business. So if that's taken away, we would have to park either on Court Street or Clark Street, you know? So it'd be a big disadvantage for us if you take away our parking. So I hope you consider that. Other than that, that's the main issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything to add to that? She did fine, but if there's anything different than what she said, that would be fine.
I think the biggest concern is parking.
Her.
Is it way in the street or not, just way of parking?
I think one thing that you guys said to us when you came in earlier was something about the speed on that street and your concern about removing parking and increasing speed.
Very much so.
Yeah.
If you put a stop sign at the corner of 12th and Clark, that would eliminate that speed, I'm sure. Adding another stop sign, but really, that's, that's a solution there, I think. Could you come off Main, it's a downhill slide for two blocks, and you'd have to stop at Clark.
Brad, we're doing a speed survey on there right now, as we speak, right?
We've done a couple of them. Yeah, we've got those numbers submitted.
So we're looking at that, that speed. I'm saying, my kids walk across Wall Street, so I get, I come flying over, yeah, I get it.
So you guys had a sign on speed limit there not too long ago, is that-
Yes, we did, right? It's by the alley.
I, I mean, I use that street all the time. I, I like it. I, it's the first thing you see when you start coming down, it's like, oh, 24, just, yeah, I think it's a nice thing to, to actually keep over there permanently if we could figure out a way to do it, so, my opinion.
We do, we've lived there, I have lived there 48 years or so, so, and we've always been able to park on that south side.
Hundred percent.
Are you guys currently comfortable with the way that your sidewalks for, I use the word accessibility loosely, but the accessibility of your sidewalks? Like, I've been down there and they seem like they're, they're not, yeah.
And we've lived there over 40 years, and I have not seen any problems with us parking on the street. It's not like we park there that often, but when we have family, like for holidays and get-togethers, we need that extra parking, else it takes, they have to walk, and some of them, we have little grandkids, over a block to get to our house because of the parking situation on Clark and Court. So we really need that parking.
Thank you guys for your emails, too. We do appreciate, I did pick up a phone call and call Aaron right after I got the email. I know I don't, I'm not the most technologically savvy person, so I just picked up the phone.
All right, thanks very much for presenting for that. Kathy and everybody else that's here. All right, we're gonna move on to ordinances. First is Planning and Zoning Commission first readings in the air.
Hit my button, there we go. Before you have two, actually, you have two ordinance changes. This, this is in regards to the 2080 that the county has changed, has chosen to disband the 2080 agreement with the city, and in order for us to, to make our code compliant with that, we need to remove two members off of the Planning and Zoning Commission and two members off of our Board of Adjustment. So the, basically, those ordinances are nothing more than changing those two things. The county to, or the county today at their meeting moved to eliminate those positions, so it's just us following the suit with the county.
All right, any questions about that?
Could we just waive the second and third, it's a done deal, just approve it? No reason to drag it out? Well, I asked-
You're on your suggesting.
Is, is there any reason not to? I, I mean, with the 30 days that's up in early March, or not?
Legally, you can do whatever you guys want to do.
Okay.
If you wish to accept the first reading, waive the final two, and then, what do, how do, then accept the ordinances as written?
Adopt the ordinances.
Adopt the ordinances. You're, you can do that. Past practice has been we at least have two readings. So that's why we did, well, that's how, why we listed it as we did.
I, I will respectfully ask to break with tradition and waive the final two and...
How many motions do we need?
Two.
We need, we just need one mo, yeah, we have a motion. Okay, okay. Okay, there we go.
And there's no financial money involved in this, you know, that's fine, right? And that's why we've been cautious about that.
Right, right.
Since the county's already done their vote, and did they, did you notice, did they have readings just like this?
No, they just-
They just did it.
Passed their-
It's all done with you. All right, I'm gonna take that as a motion from Carolyn.
So moved.
And you're gonna second it?
I just wanted to be able to second one.
Okay, you got it, you got it. Jason will second it, and let's have a roll call vote. Now, this is just for the-
P and Z.
P and Z, not for the Board of Adjustment.
Right, and this is for all three readings already. Prove the first and waive the second and third.
All right, a roll call vote, please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Born Arrow?
Yes.
Shrek? Yes. Seaman?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, that's by Laverne, and Carolyn seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Shrek? Yes. Born Arrow?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
All right, now, we'll move on to the Board of Adjustment first reading and the same deal, correct? All right. Carolyn, would you like to make the same motion regardless?
Sure, that'd be great.
Second.
Okay. Carolyn and Jason seconded. Roll call vote for that, please.
Born Arrow?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek? Yes. Dirk?
Yes.
All right, can we have a motion to adopt, please?
So moved.
Carolyn, Jason second.
Three, three in a row, that's like, that's a record.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Born Arrow?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek? Yes. Orders is adopted.
All right, thank you all. We'll move on to resolutions. The first is infill housing incentive program.
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor, Your Honor, Mayor. I'm, I'm so used to going to court, and I haven't even been to court for 15 years.
After your entrance legally up to you, then you say your honor.
Anything, we go up to you, well, well, there's no attorney here, so I gotta... So the infill housing program was an incentive that we started, well, was started before I got here. We are, but per our strategic planning, we are budgeting another $200,000 out of local option sales tax to incentivize infill housing. I would, and that will start, we'll be able to start expending those funds after July 1, but I would like to start taking the, the applications as soon as possible or when people start putting them in. So we're approving the actual program as written or a, or change in front of you now.
Any discussion on this? We're gonna keep the same rules as the first time we did this, 18 months under occupied?
Yes. Yes.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to adopt, and is there a second?
Second.
Jason and Tom.
I'm gonna go on that, Carolyn.
Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Borneo?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
All right, next resolution we'll move on to is the general obligation capital loan notes not to exceed nine million, four six five million dollars.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. During our fiscal twenty-six budget discussions, information was presented about a debt issuance that city staff would like to have council consider for spring of twenty twenty-six. So a little ways off, however, in order to get some of this information included in our fiscal twenty-six budget, we need to start this process now. You can see that the debt issuance is made up of five different projects with different dollar amounts, and the repayment source is a number of different from payment sources, including debt service levy, TIF, sewer fees, and water fees. So it's not all on property taxes, there are a number of other fees, other regular that would be paying, repaying this debt issuance. In order to get this into our process so that we can include the debt service portion of the debt, we need to set our public hearing, hold a public hearing, and pass what's called a pre-levy resolution before we approve our final budget. Part of this process on the notice of the public hearing also will state some information about how this would impact property taxes or residential property valued at a hundred thousand dollars. We worked with our financial advisors, PFM, to come up with that number, and they base that number off of a debt service payments over twenty years, but it does not include or take into account anything on what funding sources are repaying this. So the dollar amount that's listed in the public hearing notice of fifty-nine dollars and one cent does not mean that is the increase in the property taxes on any, on that hundred thousand dollar home. It's just a formula that they use, and it's something that we have to put in the public hearing notice. What we did when we worked with PFM and structuring the debt, we, for the portions of the, or the projects that are being funded by the debt service levy, we are working to keep within the dollar forty debt service levy that we've been maintaining here for a number of years and going forward. So I can't, I, I'm not one hundred percent sure off the top of my head how many years that part of the debt service levy is to be repaid, but we're staying within that dollar forty debt service amount, taking into consideration some debt that's gonna be paid off shortly here in the next year and planning for some other street projects coming up in the next two or three years. Tonight is to set the public hearing date for our next council meeting on March tenth for the not to exceed nine million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand for the general obligation capital loan notes for those five different projects that are listed in the memo. Are there questions on the process that we're working on?
So these five scenarios, is any one of them gonna be a twenty-year scenario?
Yes, the water, the water portion for the northwest water pressure zone, that is scheduled for a twenty-year payment.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, the sewer fees is maybe more like a fifteen-year. I think the TIP is around a ten, somewhere between.
Somewhere around ten.
Ten to fifteen years. And the debt service levy portion is probably less than five would be my guess.
Are you gonna combine these two in one debt service or two different?
Yes, that's why we're bringing this forward, is we have all these projects nearing or going or wanting to be done within the next fiscal year or two, and combining them all together helps save issuance costs.
Yes. You covered it. I was gonna say the same thing, similar.
Do you know, Pan, what drops off this year? I don't expect you to, but just curious.
I know it'll list it in here as a generic name, but I'm not sure if I'm gonna remember off the top of my head what that, the projects actually were, but the, your audit report will show the debt that will get paid off if it's completed. The twenty twenty-four issuance was for, I believe, the street resurfacing, however, that was paid for by TIF. Otherwise, the other ones, it's a few years out. But nothing, I guess, is getting paid off in the next year.
It's also to note that our constitutional debt limit is close to forty million or fifty million dollars, and we are under ten for our total general obligation debt, which is an extremely good number for our overall budget or financial position for a city.
I've seen other cities' statistics, and they're nowhere close to what we've been able to.
I've been involved in cities where there's eighty-five percent of their constitutional debt limit being used.
There's no other discussion, can we have a motion to set the hearing date for March tenth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
All right, all right, that was Tom. Anyone wanna second that?
Second.
Carolyn will second it. Roll call vote, please.
Bauer?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Borneo?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
All right, we'll go on to reports. The first report we have is the twenty twenty-five downtown facade improvement grants program.
Yep, similar to the, the infill lot program, this project was started last year based on the recommendation by the downtown assessment that we were given. Per our strategic planning, we recommended, they was recommended to continue that. We have set aside a hundred thousand dollars out of local option sales tax, which would be five twenty thousand grants, and would like to start taking applications. We actually have this set up in conjunction with the Chambers or CCGP's micro facade grants, so if somebody were to apply for ours, they could also apply for the micro facade with the Chamber also. So I would like to get that program started as, and be the same program as we did last year.
How many inquiries have you had thus far?
Thus far this year?
Yeah.
Uh, zero. I have not had any.
Approving this goes for exactly which dates? At the fiscal year?
Well, it's, we still wouldn't be expending any funds until after July one, but the, but the application process would start April first and go through May.
How many did we have last year, sorry?
Six.
And how many did we have available?
We, I think we set for six last year also.
Two or three are completed, right?
Two. Well, actually, three, I guess.
Or we will be paying the third one.
Yeah, the third one will be next week, which was actually fairly small. But the other two, which would have been Brothers on Main and the Buckle Building, those are complete, promising images is in the process, as is Mr. Coster's building on Main Street, and the church has not started yet.
Any other questions? All right, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Tom?
Second.
Second, by Kyle. Roll call vote, please.
Atherton?
No.
Shrek?
No.
Dirk?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Borneo?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Next, we'll move on to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six proposed property tax levy and setting a public hearing date, and Laura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the time to continue with our process for our fiscal twenty-six budget. The first step of this process is to hold a public hearing on the, what's called the proposed property tax levy. So tonight is to set that hearing date for the March twenty-four council meeting. Well, actually, we're gonna call it a special council meeting to be held at five o'clock that night, and then we will have our regular council meeting at five fifteen. You, in your information, there was the notice of, the notice of the public hearing that will be published upon council approval. In it, there are three columns, just to go through this really quickly. The first column is the fiscal twenty-five tax asking and tax rate or levy as what we're currently operating under this fiscal year of twenty-five. The middle column says what they call the effective property tax rate is if we would ask for the same tax dollars as we're asked for in fiscal twenty-five, if we ask for those same tax dollars in fiscal twenty-six, but we used our updated valuations for fiscal twenty-six, what would that tax rate look like? And you can see the tax rate would be eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents. The last column is what is being proposed for the actual rate for fiscal twenty-six. The proposal is for the twelve dollars and sixteen cents, which is what it currently is, a twelve dollars and sixteen cents. The bottom part of the notice, just to highlight, once, it's part of the required law that says we need to show a comparison of property taxes collected in twenty-five versus your proposed rate in twenty-six, and how that impacts a residential home valued at a hundred thousand. And it also put an assumption in here, is that residential home increased by ten percent? And what would that look like in the, in the property tax collections? And then what percent change is that? I would say in the city of Carroll, not many homes went up ten percent this year. If you look at property homes, unless you did a major improvement or basically built a new home, your values probably did not change. So I don't want this twelve and a half percent to say you're, it's automatically gonna go up. Everybody's property tax would go up twelve and a half percent. In our budget book, we actually showed it's only gonna be a, like, a two percent increase, maybe. And then that same calculation is done on commercial property going up a ten percent from a three hundred thousand dollar assessed property, commercial property to three hundred and thirty thousand, and what change that would be. So tonight is to set that public hearing for the next council meeting. Upon doing that, that does.
The next council meeting.
Excuse me. Excuse me, you're correct, March twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Not the next one, March twenty-fourth. That does set the maximum tax levy amount and the tax dollars requested and the maximum expenditures for fiscal twenty-six. Are there questions on this process or the budget proposal that we've discussed?
Questions? A motion, please. Is that March twenty-fourth is our?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Tom.
Second.
And second was that Kyle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, by Kyle. Roll call, please.
Borneo?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Bauer?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Atherton?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, we have committee reports available, if anyone to review on your own. I have no comments from the mayors, how about that? Anything from the city council members? And how about the city manager?
Excuse me, I, I was slow, I was looking. I appreciated the Carroll County Library values fiscal year twenty-four, comparing all the county's libraries and the services, the numbers, the data. We are, they're all doing well, but you're doing exceptionally well. Thank you very much, Wendy. It was really helpful, good information.
All right.
I got something, too. So the removal of supervisors from the P and Z and stuff, I want you to know that there was a phone call that I made today to make sure that it wasn't done, like, there's no, you know what I mean? Like, whether we need to keep somebody on you or whatever. I know that it got a little contentious there with the twenty-eighty agreement. I've dealt with you a million times, you know, I'm a pretty fair guy. I just don't want there to be, going forward, you know what I mean? We want to be able to really work as a cohesive unit going forward, and kind of like, yeah, I got, this one didn't work out as well as it should have, I just want everyone to know that, you know? I'm a ball player here, you know, and I think everybody else feels the same way, you know? Kind of ended a little, not the way we wanted to, but, so, we appreciate what you guys are doing, so, okay?
All right, city man, do you have any comment?
I do not have any, could I?
You don't have any? All right. All right, we're going to move into a closed session, parial code twenty-one point five one J, regarding potential purchase or sale of real estate.